Good evening and welcome to the June Issaquah City Council Services and Safety Committee Meeting. We have four things on the agenda this evening: a senior center update, Agenda Bill 7352, 2017 Second Budget Amendments, Agenda Bill 7419, an interlocal agreement with Eastside Fire, Agenda Bill 7438, PSE Green Direct Power Service Agreement. And what I'm going to do is, I believe there may be some members in the audience who are of particular interest in the senior center, and I want to let them know that we will take some public comment after the update on the senior center that will be captured in our fine video, fine audiovisual system. So with that, I'm going to ask Jeff Watling, our Director of Parks and Recreation, to take the big -- oh, sure, not take the stage. Take the big table thing.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Happy to be here tonight to give a quick update on the senior center and really focus a lot on the work of our senior advisory group and mapping out what we see as the next couple of weeks ahead for us. A little background, though, seems like only yesterday we were talking about the taking over operation of the facility and that transition that occurred here in early January. We are now just a little over five months into that operation. I think things continue to go certainly well. I think we're very, very well aware that we are working within, I think as I've shared a number of times, an interim operating model. Katie Moller, who's with us here tonight, has just done a fantastic job, is leading that in-facility effort. We've got a great group of staff and volunteers who are doing wonderful work, but it is not necessarily a model that's built to be long-term. And that really leads to, and I think we knew going into this, this interim operation was going to really allow us to really take the time we wanted as a city, as a community, to look at what long-term operation should be, and we want it to be going long-term. A part of that was our commitment of creating an advisory group to help us in that effort. Happy to, really proud to announce that as we went through that application and interview process in March, we have a group of 10 members that began, our first meeting was April 11th. We've been meeting weekly for the most part. I've probably spent these first two months, I think, doing a lot of work, learning, learning what other senior centers are doing, talking through and really shaping some of the, I think, questions that are going to help us in vetting what long-term operation models look like, what we want to do in terms of, and consider in terms of, programs and services, what we're going to want to consider in terms of budget. We just have our meeting, we meet Tuesdays at 4:00. If anyone listening wants to come and join us, all those meetings are open to the public. In fact, just tonight, really looking and mapping out what we see as our next two months of really now diving into the details that are going to help to shape the report, and a report that we plan on bringing back to you in August. We're setting a goal for the August Services and Safety Meeting to be able to come back with you with recommendations and advice from the group. We have a number of advisory board members here tonight. I'm just going to call them out, whether they choose to speak or not. We have former Mayor Ava Freisinger, who's part of our group, Jan Pelroy, Scott Turtell, Inez Peterson is also a member of the group. So 10 in all, like I said, and just a terrific group. I'm going to share with you, and forgive me, I know attachments aren't what we usually like to do. I'll make sure Therese has a copy of this as well. Hot off the press, we sort of finalized this tonight. This is really a framework, an outline, if you will, of the report that we are going to be putting together in the coming weeks. As you'll see, looks and sort of feels like an Agenda Bill, if you will, but it's really going to help shape our discussions in the coming weeks as we now, again, take a lot of information that we've got. I think as the group is really ready to begin talking through not only their opinions, but really beginning to look at options, but you'll see sort of a four broad categories that we're going to frame the report around, from history and background, to really asking ourselves, what can we learn from past experiences at the senior center? How does that help shape our opportunities and issues that we see moving forward? That third section is really the meat, I think, of the document, the recommendations, but breaking those down into three areas. What's the governance model that we might want to look in and pursue, but also programs and services and budget, and how those really become, really shape the level of service target that we want to try and hit with the senior center? And then lastly, category of looking forward, and how do we set a vision and a mission for not only long-term, but really a vision and mission that hopefully will help shape the transition? Because I think what we're going to be going to in this next phase is not just an automatic on-off switch, meaning interim operation just stops. We're going to really see and I think need to think through a transition period, whatever that governance model looks like. So some great work ahead. Again, happy to get any feedback or comments or questions that you might have as we move forward.
So will the, I guess I can call on myself. So will the report be a draft or a final in August?
The thought is it would be a, likely a final, is what we'd be striving for as an advisory group. We talked about this tonight, in fact, in terms of realizing that that is not an end product, it's going to feel like an end product for the advisory group, but we're hoping it's framed in a way that really sets and frames a discussion, the future discussion for the advisory group and you all as council as you're moving forward.
And one thing first, and that will be towards a proposed or a notional decision from the council when? It's part of budget or separate from budget or what?
Could be either, but I think given timing of budget, it could be separate from budget. I think as we're looking at and understanding, just like I said before, there's going to need to be a transition period. So whatever the decision or direction is on governance and long-term, we're likely going to be having interim operation into next year somehow, or for some period of time. I present this as giving, I think, some freedom and flexibility and not feeling like there has to be a decision made during the budget process.
Okay, so it's decoupled?
Right.
All right.
Good way to put it.
So I was curious, as you're researching, what other senior facilities are doing and how they're set up and their governance and that kind of thing. Is there a pattern of best practices that are developing, or are you finding that each individual senior center or city is running things a little bit differently?
Great question. I think there are definite best practices in terms of operations, in terms of programs and services, and in some ways budget. I think governance, how it's operated, I think we're seeing a mix of whether it's a non, a number of cities, a number of neighboring cities are direct operators, meaning the city directly operates them, but there are certainly others that are operated as nonprofits. So I don't know that there's a, and certainly the group can speak to this as well, that I don't think there's a best practice in one of those two.
Okay.
But I think what we do see best practices in how the spectrum of programs and services are set up, is it a good, healthy mix of programs, i.e. activities, recreation, health and wellness, but also a mix of services, social services, human services that are offered on-site? I think another best practice we see programmatically and service-wise is the agency isn't trying to do it alone, if you will, whether it's a nonprofit or a city. I think clearly a best practice, a pattern we see is healthy, vibrant senior centers are bringing in other agencies to assist or provide programs. So it's almost a facilitated management as opposed to lone management or, you know, solo service delivery, if that makes sense. So clearly some patterns that I think will try and play out, but the governance piece, how it's operated, it really is a mix. In a lot of ways, probably a lot of subsets, a lot of hybrids within how facilities are directly managed or operated.
Jeff, have you began to put together some of the governance formats and the budget and so on, and what kind of a timeline are you working on to sort of get all of those basic core pieces put together?
We haven't. Again, we've probably done some of the research, but in terms of compiling it and putting together, no, we haven't. Like I said, we are aggressively, just in fact, tonight mapped out a sort of a six-week game plan for how we are going to take these categories, section by section, to try and meet this goal, so.
Are you starting to see that citizens coming back? Are they, are the numbers increasing in activities and?
Yes, yes. I'm looking at Katie to get affirmation, but yes, we are seeing, I think lunches are probably averaging 50 at our lunches. Our trips and tours are full. I think there's a lot of, I think, I'd say that there's a positive energy that's still radiating from that facility, so good news.
It is good news. From where we've been to today, sounds like it's really good news.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. And at this point, well, we don't actually do question and answer with the audience. What we do, though, is take audience comment. And so this is the point where we're going to offer audience comment. The audience can ask questions of council for future consideration, but we don't have the council directly address city staff members. This is a council meeting and you're welcome to address us. And that would be a perfect time. If you actually, if you want to come up to the microphone and address us, you're welcome to. And you are welcome to give us your name or not.
This microphone?
Correct. And I'll ask you to keep your comments to two minutes.
My name is Eugene Noble. Mayor asked me some time ago to look into safety issues at the senior center, which I have been doing. It's been a month and a half. Some concerns were raised, some have been corrected, some continue to not be corrected, and I am concerned about it. Today, there was a table place, we had all agreed we were going to put chair by those legs, but the poor the table is, is a group of people whose minds do not work very well. They consistently take the chair away from the safety factor. And so I'm requesting that Katie move that table completely away and into that other room, some room completely away from where people can endanger themselves from the legs. End of my statement.
All right, well, thank you very much. Is there anyone else, sorry, is there anyone else who wishes to speak with us this evening on the senior center? Yes, please come up to the microphone.
I'm being Dave to the punch, I guess, here. So Inez Peterson, spoken from this podium many times over the past two years, and I sometimes have to laugh at myself. Remember the night I brought the cabbage? I can't believe what I did, but anyway. The two years of being intimately involved with the senior center has given me some insight. And a few of my thoughts are, the current budget is inadequate. There's a major need of the seniors that's been overlooked. And I know this because I put up on the board a poster with my number on it, offering to give seniors rides. I was inundated with calls. There are many of our seniors who need rides, and of course, we have one van, we used to have three. There used to be an employee that was paid to drive the seniors around, which we don't have. So that is a major issue that would have to be incorporated regardless of what model we go to. Which brings me to my thoughts on the model. The city has got to keep an umbilical cord that can never be broken so that they have oversight, and what happened before can never happen again. And this is especially important if we go to the nonprofit model, which I am against. I would like to see the city retain the leadership supervisory position, and it could outsource certain things to NPOs or LLCs or whatever. But the city has got to maintain the oversight, not only over the programs, but over the The wording of the lease and the other agreement is so critical because that's where the oversight and the teeth the city needs in order to make sure that what happened before never happens again. Our advisory group is vastly wonderful and is working toward providing something very worthwhile to you shortly. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. David Wagener, Issaquah resident, member of the senior center. Already?
Wow.
Wow. That's the fastest two minutes in my life. Couple things that I want to highlight for Jeff and Ross and Katie. One thing is there's a lot more trips now, which is really great and growing, heading in the right direction on that. Started movie night, which we have some fans who love movie night on Wednesday night, doing lots of things. One of the questions that came about last week or two weeks ago was services or programs? Services or programs? Guess what? Services can be programs and programs can be services. Example would be the meal. Maybe we'll go up to five meals a week, who knows? That's not only a service, but it's a program and vice versa. So it can be both. Governance and bylaws. I made this point tonight. Bylaws are wonderful. I helped write bylaws for King County, but when you have bylaws, you have to abide by them. And the only organization that I know that can get that or the senior center to abide by those bylaws would be the city. So I fully agree that there has to be an umbilical cord because as you look at me, you see the history of what happened over at that senior center, and we never, ever want that to happen ever again to any of our citizens, especially seniors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else this evening who wishes to speak before us? All right. Thank you for your comment on this. We're going to move on now to, and Jeff, thank you for your presentation, and good luck to the group. We'll be eagerly awaiting seeing that report in August. We're on to Agenda Bill 7352. This is the 2017 Second Budget Amendments, and we're going to see our friend Jennifer Olson, who we've seen a lot of lately, even more. Hooray, more meetings. Didn't we just see you yesterday?
And the day before.
And the day before that, and the day before that.
And a Friday night and a Saturday.
We've had five council meetings in the last six days. Just fine, I'm not complaining, I'm noting.
Yeah.
The Agenda Bill that was referred to, this committee, is proposed budget appropriation adjustments that are needed to cover expenditures and revenues that were not part of the adopted 2017 or the original adopted budget. That was done in December of 2016. There was one amendment in 2017, same thing that had expenditures and revenues. These proposed changes to the budget primarily are directed from specific Agenda Bills that the council has addressed. The detail with regards to the budget amendment is best reviewed in Exhibit A. That's where that provides essentially some line item information about proposed new revenues and expenditures within a particular fund. So what I'd like to do is just be here to answer any specific questions of a line item. In the exhibit, the Agenda Bill that the council addressed and directed the administration to add to a future budget amendment, that has been referenced. There are a couple of budget amendment items with regards to some additional contracted services, professional services in the General Fund for Development Services Department, as well as a grant for the Mountains to Sound Greenway, work on Tradition Lake at Trailhead, so there is an additional revenue, and then corresponding match of professional services that would be needed for the expenditure. So with that, we've got a total proposed change in overall ending fund balance of a little over $3.8 million, spread over all of the funds that the city tracks. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee would have about the proposed amendments.
So I'm confused, if it's $3.9 million, why does the expenditure required list $142,000? Oh, no, that's not, I see. No, I'm totally looking at that wrong. That's not $142,000, that's $142,000, all total across the, all the funds. What is that number? Tell me about that number.
Total expenditures, and forgive me, I've, either our connection here is lost, the actual file is, I'm trying to pull it up. But the, when you look at, there's three different columns in the budget amendment, the first part of the exhibit to the ordinance, and that will show the current state of revenues, the current state of expenditures, and the proposed changes in each of those categories, and then the overall impact to ending fund balance for all funds.
I see.
I'm still not pulling up the PDF, so I'm winging it here a little bit. Oh, I'm sorry. No worries, no worries. So the, because the budget is, from an appropriation standpoint, the budget is currently with expenditures of the $136 million. Those proposed changes to the expenditure budget bring the expenditures needed for the $142 million, and that is typically what's listed in the Agenda Bill to refer to the expenditure required. So that's where those two numbers are coming from.
I see now.
Jennifer, on the, under the adjustments to expenditures for DSD, professional services, so the first line item is the $375,000 for the Gilman Lofts developer agreement, that has to do with the light? Is that the signalization?
No, that is my understanding, is that it came out of the changes in that Agenda Bill 7219, and that is for the, that combined work that's going to be done. That's the city's portion of that particular project.
Okay, and then the next one down, the contracted limited term services for planning, building and engineering divisions. Can you just explain a little bit more about that 250?
That is a departmental ask, as you know, that there are, is a need for additional work to be completed there, with some delays in getting some of the workload out. So essentially to hire in some professional services and contracted people to come in to provide some of that and get rid of some of that backlog of work.
Got it. Okay.
Leanne, any questions?
Parks construction. I'm seeing a $1.088 increase. Yes, okay. For what?
That is for the Central Park.
Oh, Central? Yes, okay.
So that's part of what we just agreed to a few weeks ago.
That's correct.
Sorry, you had other questions?
Not right now.
All right, so the line.
Can I jump in there one more?
Please do.
Water construction.
The water construction fund, that again is for that South Cove pressure-reducing valve project.
That's $182,000.
That is an increase to the project. You'll see the lines above, there is, then half of that is reimbursed by the city of Bellevue, and so that is the result of the bids that had come in for that RV project.
So that's $91,000 for?
Correct. Yes. That's the revenue offsetting that additional cost to that project.
I have a question. Back to Exhibit A, it revolves around the third section, which has to do with ending fund balance, as per ordinance 2795. Now, there's amended ending fund balance, and I'm wondering if any of these amended ending fund balances fail to meet our financial standards?
Fail to meet our financial?
Standards for like minimum amounts?
From a fund balance standpoint?
Correct.
The targets. Well, for general fund, and I don't have the level of detail, the percent of the total expenditures in this particular document, but for the general fund, the additional decrease in fund balance still keeps us well above the maximum 15% in the general fund. The other special revenue type funds, capital project funds, those, that information is something I do not have at this point. Capital project funds, though, typically do not have a reserve level because the nature of capital project funds are to use up the funds.
No, but operating funds do.
And so the operating funds are, in this case, for the city of Issaquah, are the general fund, the street operating fund, and the utility funds, the utility enterprise funds, and then the facility fund. So those, especially the utility funds, have very healthy ending fund balances, but the actual target or the reserve amount is something I don't know at this time.
So what I'd like to do, if we move forward with this bill, is ask that for the full council session, if you could have that information available?
Certainly.
Because I believe you, but I would also like to just have it up and show it and show those, show the health there.
Okay, so just so I'm clear, and what you're asking for is the ending fund balance as a percentage of the expenditures and whether or not that complies with the currently adopted financial policy reserve section.
For the funds that had, where those standards are applicable?
Operating funds, okay. Yes.
All right.
All right.
Thanks, that would be helpful. Other questions? All right, well, a public, no, we've all got city staff here, so I'm going to assume there's no public comment, city staff and our partners. So, discussion.
Well, where are we going to with this? Where does this go now? Goes back to council?
That's a great question.
June 19th. This will be going back to council?
Correct. And I would propose moving it back on regular business, given the amount.
Absolutely.
So discussion, comments, thoughts?
Well, as I look through, everything was as we had talked about in the past, so I just had really that one question that I needed answered, but you know.
All right, it sounds like we're three to oh for bringing it back on June 19th per the recommendation on regular business.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we're going to go to Agenda Bill 7419, interlocal agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue for tactical emergency medical support. Rescue for tactical emergency medical support. We're going to have Commander Porter, the IPD, joining us.
My name is Bob Porter. I'm a commander with the Issaquah Police Department, and I am here to discuss the Agenda Bill 7419, interlocal agreement with Eastside Fire and Rescue for tactical emergency medical support. So let me give you a little bit of background on my Agenda Bill and introducing this ILA. The Issaquah Police Department currently has a specially trained group of officers called the Special Operations Team, and I am the team commander. And what the team trains for is outside of their roles of normal patrol officers and detectives, they get together and they train monthly for high-risk situations, including search warrants, barricaded subjects, things that require a higher degree of training and expertise. Currently, the Eastside Fire and Rescue has firefighters that are on our team and they train with our team, and they're embedded into our team as emergency medical services firefighters. And that role allows us and them to become familiar with each other, and they are closer to the incident and are more available to respond quicker to care for any injured persons during, if that ever occurred during an incident. So there, that role that they play is separate than a firefighter that would respond in a ALS unit, for example. This, this partnership that we've had with Eastside Fire is much appreciated and has been in, in effect for a number of years now. And I have been asked, as a, this is more of a housekeeping ILA, I've been asked by Eastside Fire to generate this document and put it into motion to identify the role that the tactical emergency medical support role of the firefighters, just because the, if it's identified, that they can utilize it to provide for their labor and industries, to provide for their insurance, to formalize this agreement so that they can move forward with their own paperwork, per se. As far as costs, there are no costs to, there are no increased costs to the city. This is just formalizing and identifying a role that they don't have on paper right now.
I see it. I see. After you.
This is really the first time we've put this document together to bring this information forward, and that all sides know what's going on here?
That's correct. Yeah, they've, we, as you know, the city has an interlocal with EFER that we've had for quite a long time for, for medical services. But this, we don't, we, up until now, we've never had a formalized document identifying the actual tactical EMS services that they provide our team. So this is a good thing. And it's, it's strictly a housekeeping. It, it identifies it, and then everyone moves forward, and, and it's, it's pretty, pretty standard, and there's no costs, like I said.
And I want to confirm what I think I read is, it also, each side keeps their own liability, so it doesn't, there's no, it's no shifting. In addition to dollars, there's no risk shift as a result of this.
That's correct. Everything stays as it is with, under the current initial ILA. This, this just identifies the piece of the embedded tactical EMS role that they play, but there's no incurred liability costs, et cetera.
All right. Ryan?
So just to further understand, this is, the, the document is to really point out the different ownership within the groups in terms of procedural?
Right. Yes, so it identifies the, it identifies planning, it identifies the fact that they train with us, and identifies the incident response roles that the firefighters play. So when we do have an incident, that I'll request their assistance, and then throughout the incident, it'll be planned. We've trained for incidents like these, and then in order to activate the firefighters for medical assistance, it'll come under my direction at the command post. So it's a very, it's a procedural document, and it defines what they do and how they plan for it. So it's, it's, it's a positive thing that just sheds light on the role with our, with our team and our officers.
So they'll be coming underneath our, so our authority as opposed to an additional, anyone, any leadership from Eastside Fire and Rescue will not be there. It'll be Issaquah Police Department that will be sort of guiding and controlling the situation.
Right. That's right. Now, at times, Eastside Fire will have supervisors, because they currently, right now, they have supervisors that train with our team and non-supervisors that train with our team. But they, they know their care roles, and we just make it safe for them to perform their care roles. And that's the big difference, is that we don't want them to enter into a dangerous situation, but we want them to be closer to provide help only when we deem it safe to do so.
Ryan?
And so you also talked about it, and just a clarification, it pointing out responsibilities in terms of helping with insurance, LNI, that kind of thing, so that's all spelled out?
Yes, it is. It is. It, it, this, this formalizes our partnership with them, and it allows EFER administration to, because now it's recognized, they can, it helps them with providing the benefits and recognizing the, the hours that they put in and all of the paperwork involved.
Just a piece of history, I'm just curious. Was EFER part of the response to the active shooter that we had a few years ago?
Yes, they were.
By the high school?
Yes.
They were, they were on scene for potential medical?
Yes, yes, they were. So typically, in a, in a, in an active situation or any, any, any situation where the police initiate the incident and request fire assistance, we will have them, we will have our dispatch call Eastside Fire and Rescue and for assistance, and we'll have them stage and prepare and be ready to provide aid, but only when we're, we feel it's safe enough for them to enter and provide the aid. But they definitely did help us that day, and, and our partnership is very valued and appreciated.
Wonderful. It's good to.
It's a great department. We, we very much enjoy working with Eastside Fire.
That is good to hear. All right. Well, questions? I see this is also, this would also be coming back the 19th. I think we can put it, what do you think, consent? And if somebody wants to pull it down to get more info, what do you think, Eileen?
I would almost like to have it on the regular agenda, just to bring some attention to what's going on and the partnership that is.
All right. Well, then, as one of our two EFER reps, then I think that's, that's what you want? That's what I want. What do you think?
I would agree.
All right. Well, there we go.
Just to shed some, shed some light.
Great. And Commander Porter, if, if you could be there to answer council questions or, or send someone appropriately, that would be great.
Absolutely.
All right.
So the direction is return to full council for discussion and approval?
Three to oh, recommendation to approve and to come back to full council on the 19th in regular business. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Agenda Bill 7438, PSE Green Direct Power Service Agreement with David Fujimoto, our Sustainability Director.
I have a presentation. Should I go from up here?
Yes. Please do.
That sounds good. So let me know if you can't hear me. Okay. Good evening, council members and others. David Fujimoto, Director of the Office of Sustainability. So I'm here to, tonight to talk about the Green Direct Power Purchasing Agreement. This Agenda Bill is seeking authorization to enter into an agreement with Puget Sound Energy for what's actually called a renewable energy tariff. And I'll give you a little bit more information about that as well. This is a new program of Puget Sound Energy. It's actually a pretty innovative one. It's one of very few across the country that are starting to go into place. And basically, what it does is it provides for an opportunity to provide, to purchase renewable energy directly, and this, through our electric utility. And so essentially, they're acting as an aggregator of demand, if you will, and then being intermediary to actually put in place those arrangements to purchase renewable energy at utility scale, but available at a local level. Through this particular tariff, it's available only to certain customers, those large customers that they have as well, and they've chosen to offer it to municipal customers as well. They have a limited supply that they're able to do through this particular tariff, which is limited to 75 average megawatts. So that's about the same power that's equivalent to power about 30,000 homes, typical homes in the Northwest, just to kind of give you a sense of scale. But it's also, it's unique in that it's allowing customers such as the city who have relatively modest-scale demands as compared to maybe industry, or, and to participate in kind of utility-scale renewable energy. As I said before, it's a renewable energy tariff, and this is a little bit different from what you may have heard about with things like green power programs, which are more typical for residential and actually for some commercial customers, where you typically would pay an additional amount on your bill to ensure that you're getting kind of renewable energy or purchasing green energy through the utility infrastructure. This is different in that you're actually purchasing that energy supply directly. And so what shows up is there's an energy charge and there's an energy credit, and it only applies to that portion of the bill that relates to energy supply. So some of the benefits are that it provides for an opportunity for energy stability, which I'll get into a little bit more. In the future, if this continues, we might have the opportunity to pick the resource, meaning the type of renewable energy supply that comes along. And it's also long-term, which has some pros and cons in terms of how you approach it, but it kind of depends on what your forecast is for the future and what your intent is in terms of financial outlook. Just backing up a little bit and asking the question of, you know, why are we even taking a look at this? This is a snapshot of PSE's, Puget Sound Energy's fuel mix from 2015, and for some reason, this is not showing up correctly. Apologize for that. But the gray, so this is the overall electricity fuel mix for Puget Sound Energy's electricity supply in the Northwest, which includes Issaquah. And so the, the gray category name up there is actually coal-based electricity. The blue is hydro, and the red is natural gas. And I don't know why it's not showing up there, but the point is, from a overall energy production standpoint, coal, if, from a greenhouse gas emission standpoint, emits quite a bit of greenhouse gases. A lot of times, we think in the Northwest, we have quite a bit of hydro supply, which is relatively clean, and that's true, but for Puget Sound Energy, they actually have a fairly large chunk of their supply, which is, which is coal. So the Green Direct Charge, as I said before, is a renewable energy supply that's specific to this particular program. In this case, it's a wind project, which is in southwest Washington. It's located in Lewis and Thurston Counties, so it's relatively local. It means that Puget Sound Energy is able to use their, their own transmission lines, so there's not additional cost for paying, using regional power lines. It's set up in such a way that it starts in 2019, and it has a fixed price escalator of 2%. So you start with the initial rate, and there's an adjustment factor that goes forward. And it's linked to some of our, to your existing accounts. So you basically can sign up on a per-account basis. So if there were an account, for example, for this building, you can sign up for this account, and it applies to that one. And you can pick and choose, depending on which accounts you think are the most, would be most applicable. And it also has, as I said before, it's a long-term agreement. And there are some things called renewable energy certificates, or RECs. More of a complicated conversation, but with green power, there are these kind of renewable energy attributes that you can buy and sell on the open market. As a part of this, those get retired because that's part of the reason why we'd be pursuing this. The charge itself, as I said, only applies to the supply. It doesn't relate to anything else that Puget Sound Energy provide, so billing or transmission costs or their meter reading. All those other aspects remain part of Puget Sound Energy's costs, so there's still those costs, only affecting the power supply cost. And Puget Sound Energy still continues to be the city's electricity provider. On the credit side of the equation, because we're replacing a, a new energy supply with existing portfolio supply, that portfolio, that portfolio that included coal as well as hydro and natural gas, so you pay for the wind power and then you get credited back the cost of the, the regular kind of standard supply mix, if you will. And again, those don't include any of those other kind of utility-related functions. So this is a kind of a mock-up. It's an example of kind of how this might show up. The number's a little bit different because, excuse me, they had produced this earlier on, but what you can see is that there's some base charges, and there's some different pieces associated with that. And then in the green, you can see that there's an energy credit, and then there's a cost. And so you get debited for the kind of standard fuel supply, and then you pay for the, the green direct fuel supply. In terms of energy costs, because it is a long-term purchasing agreement, there are some, some things to consider, and the overall kind of impact, the net impact to the city in terms of our energy costs. You have to make some kind of projections and assumptions as you look forward into energy supplies. If you look historically, Puget Sound Energy's rates on average have been about 2.4% increase over a 15-year period. Going forward, there's a number of ways to look at, you know, what rates might do. The first one is Puget Sound Energy's Integrated Resource Plan, that's the IRP. That's how they do their longer-term planning. It has a very high projected rate factor. The next one is the Energy Information Association, which is longer, long-term looking as well, and I think, believe that covers the entire Pacific Northwest. You can see there's different numbers, and then first, for natural gas, the numbers are a little bit closer, but also will vary as well. There is also something called the Northwest Power Planning Council, and they forecast about a 3% growth in energy over the next 20 years. But it really comes down to, are you bearish or are you bullish about where energy prices are going to go? And there's a variety of things that might affect those, from the coal plant shutdown and coal strip, to, you know, climate change, to demands shifting over the years. So there's just a whole bunch of different factors that go into forecasting the future. If you kind of take a look at some of the rate scenarios, as I mentioned before, this would start in 2019, and we're recommending a 10-year agreement. This is taking a look at a few different scenarios. The green direct rate is the, the dashed green line there, and the others are projections off of an existing rate going forward from 2018 at either 0.01, which is the five-year look back, all the way up to 3%, and somewhere around 2.4%. You can see that the, the green direct rate starts to match up with the 15-year 2.4% Looking at, this is from Puget Sound Energy, and this is over a longer timeframe. The, their projection here includes a, a number of different inflation rates for rates, and with 2% at an annual increase as opposed to 4%, 2.5% and 1.5% over a very long time, timeframe, 20 years, it's the potential for the rates under green direct to actually be quite a bit less than standard electricity rates. But again, this is all forward-looking. So some considerations, it's available for both large and small accounts, and we can apply this to both buildings and infrastructure. We've taken a look at all the city's various accounts, talked with our Parks Department, with Public Works Operations. If we're going to participate in this, we'd want to make sure it's for something that we know is going to be in place for 10 years or, you know, perfectly longer or so, because we'd be committing to this energy rate over that timeframe. Also, this, the rate, the tariff provides some flexibility. It's actually a very flexible program, so even if we were to apply it to, say, this building, and we were to implement some energy efficiency measures, there's no penalty to the city for doing so. So even if our energy demand decreases in the future, Puget Sound Energy is okay with that because it's signing up essentially on a per-account basis. And also, even if we're to install solar panels on this building, for example, and that reduced our demand, that's okay under this program. that reduced our demand, that's okay under this program as well. So looking at some of the costs, this is an example in the first year under Green Direct with the charge of .05111 per kilowatt hours. And then the energy credit will be based on the rates that are in effect at that time, which is estimated about .0493. So there's a small delta in terms of the net cost to the city per kilowatt hours. So under our recommendation, where we're looking at 90, about 99 accounts, our annual electricity demand is just under 4 million kilowatt hours, just under $500,000 per year in what we're currently paying on our electric bills. Estimated net cost will vary depending on what energy prices actually do, but it is, we believe it's between $6,300 and $8,500 for that first year. Little bit of just background, there's something called the Renewable Energy Buyers Alliance, there's a whole consortium of different businesses that are specifically focused on looking for renewable energy with long-term price stability. Utilities play a big role as aggregators in identifying utility-scale renewable energy so they can be cost-competitive, so there's large demand for this. And also locally with this Green Direct program, there are a number of cities and businesses that have already signed up, about 13 so far, and there's a number that are in the mix and have chosen to participate. Some cities, I believe Mercer Island and Snoqualmie have chosen to, to do 100% of all of their facilities, infrastructure and buildings at renewable energy under this program. We're proposing we do a portion of them. So just in summary, some of the benefits, renewable energy is coming from the Northwest source. We have a, the city has some climate and carbon reduction goals, this would contribute to our community goals in that, that way. It's a, and it's a new program and the way that PSE's structured it is, they're trying to minimize administrative costs as much as possible. And so there is very, very little that's incorporated into this. And it's possible that they're going to be continuing this forward in the future, so there may be some additional options for the portion of the council that we don't pursue. And then finally, council is also going to be hearing about the Sustainable Building Action Strategy, which has been under-reviewed by Land and Shore, but also planned to come forward. And it also talks about renewable energy as well, so this helps to achieve some of those goals. I won't spend a bunch of time on this, this is, there's something called a Renewable Portfolio Standard in Washington, this is just additive to that, so it provides some additional renewable power to the overall energy supply. So our recommendation is that we focus with this Green Direct program on 10-year agreement. We have a number of infrastructure and buildings, which are pretty established, which are pretty stable and we believe will be in place. There are a number of buildings that we would like to take a look at from a solar standpoint. We would need to do a little bit more detailed solar analysis, those include the community center, the pool and the senior center for a few. We're suggesting we don't do anything with this building or City Hall Northwest, because those might be a part of future considerations for future municipal buildings or whatever, but with, those are undetermined at this point in time, so we wouldn't enroll them in this program. And that we also would take another peek at this, Puget Sound Energy has said that they may offer this program again in about a year, they're not sure at this point, but that if they do, they may choose a different solar or different renewable energy source. And if so, we might be able to select a different supply, meaning it could be utility-scale solar, which has some different, or lower environmental impacts than wind does. And then finally, just because of the tariff is limited to, in their total allocation, PSE is right now signing up their remaining balance. And so we don't know exactly where they're going to hit that mark. They've said that we're going to come in really close to the line, so we may find that we just make it or we just go over. But that's, so that's just a heads up, and if not, we would be in line for future offerings. So with that, I think that's it. Sorry if that was too wonky.
Can I ask, back at the fiscal analysis?
Uh huh.
You have your cost per kilowatt hour there.
Whoops.
And you have your energy credit estimated. You have a net cost. So remind me, this energy credit estimated, tell me a little bit more about that, because if somehow that were to change substantially, then our net cost would change substantially?
That's correct. So the way that the Green Direct is, works is it applies to the energy supply part of your bill. And so there's a charge for the Green Direct, the renewable power, and there's a debit for the kind of standard fuel mix. And so the credit is the standard fuel mix. And so depending on future rate filings, whether rates go up or down, will affect how, how large or small that credit is, essentially. And so that, that sort of relates to this question of, you know, there was actually a rate decrease that happened with Puget Sound Energy in 2017, but the, their latest rate filing is for an increase. And then depending on what you think they're going to do in the future, are they going to continue to keep going up or down, will tell you how much the delta is between the rate that we'd be paying under Green Direct versus Puget Sound Energy.
I see.
Yep.
But our rates do lock in with this 2%?
They do, yeah. So, so that's a, both a pro and a con, I think, because, you know, it's a con if the market prices go down, but on the other hand, it provides us with some price stability.
There we go.
Yeah.
If we see peak oil, then they'll be the only buildings in the city with the lights on, so.
Right.
Got that going for us as well. How much of the city does this cover? Oh, 70%?
It's about 70% of, and so those are just municipal accounts, right, so.
And does it affect any mission-critical systems and is there any perceived reliability or availability differences in-
It doesn't, it, so it does include, on the list that we've added with operations, it includes reservoirs, pump stations, streetlights, a variety of facilities, traffic signals. But because of the way that power enters the grid, you know, you, just because an electron of power is generated from a solar plant or a wind farm, doesn't mean we get that same electron, but there is redundancy built into the power supply. So it wouldn't be any different than the power that we receive currently.
There's no substation switches that get switched-
No.
-from position one to position two?
That's correct, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure. Questions? Right.
So I, I realize this is a new program, are there other similar programs that have been rolled out elsewhere, even in the country that you're aware of, or?
This one, I think there's about a half a dozen or so in this kind of variety, as I mentioned, there's a whole variety and have been a number of renewable power programs for, you know, such as green power for residential or commercial customers. Puget Sound Energy's been in the renewable power industry for a long time, they already have wind and solar in their standard fuel mix, they're required to by state law, that's the Renewable Portfolio Standard. This is just different and new in that they're actually taking that very specific piece about the energy supply cost and allowing a customer to switch it out. And, you know, larger customers, if you're Microsoft, you have the ability to take a much larger demand and negotiate. Smaller customers such as the city or individual businesses don't have that ability, so that's the really unique part, is the fact that you can do it all the way down to an account basis and say, I want this specific account for this building to be a part of the program.
So when we look at the pie chart that shows sort of the-
With the unknowns?
The unknowns, like, but the big chunk that, that was focused on coal. In 10 years after this project is over, then would that show a larger piece of the pie for wind?
It would. So it, so there's two things, actually maybe three things at play. One is, there's a Renewable Portfolio Standard, which requires, I believe, up to 15% of their portfolio to be renewable, so that's required by law, so that would require the, that renewable portion to get bigger. There's programs such as this, which would be, make that pie, that wedge even further. And then there's other things such as negotiated agreements that Puget Sound Energy has for things like shutdown of certain portions of coal strip, which is the coal plant in Montana, which you may have heard about, because it's been in the news, so.
Eileen?
I think they've all been answered.
Right, anything else?
Okay, I, I just wanted to clarify, so if, if we were not to go forward right now, then there, there would most likely be another opportunity a year from now, but it might not be with wind, it could be a different type of renewable energy.
That's correct. And we don't know, PSE has, has said that they would like to offer it, but they have to go through the process of, you know, going through an RFP, going through the Washington State Utilities and Transportation Commission, vetting the rates and the rate structure and all those different pieces. It could be a completely different rate, it could be a better rate, it could be a worse rate. Don't know what the timing of that looks like, but, you know, so this is essentially kind of their first test. Part of what we, we suggest is that we believe this is a pretty good rate and the overall cost impact is relatively small. Since we would be looking at about 70% of our accounts, as the program comes up, again, we could take a look at that and assess, do we, would we want to cover some additional accounts or, or not? And over time, I think we could choose to essentially ladder some of those so that we're kind of averaging our rates at a, maintaining them at a cost-competitive level.
So with a, a new program, we, in a year, even if we were doing this program, we could possibly add on?
We could, yes.
Eileen?
So what percent of the city's offices and buildings will be under this particular program?
It's, so it's about 70% of our total demand.
So there would be an opportunity in the future if we came back again for the other 30% to-
That's correct, yeah.
All right, other questions? David? Discussion?
It's funny.
Yeah, it's, it's almost like an insurance policy, right? It costs us a little bit now, but for most city power, it keeps it from heaven knows, heavens knows what rates down the road.
Our end is positive.
I think as we, as we look at everything that we're trying to roll out with sustainability and to have the opportunity for the city to participate with 70%, and then maybe the option down the road to do more, it seems like it would be a really great thing to do. And I think totally you asked the critical question about whether there would be, you know, any, any issues in terms of the power grid, or thank you for the explanation, because that was one of my questions as well, if there would be, if you would notice a difference, I guess, is-
Electrons are greener.
Yeah, greener.
Let's just, it's-
Poor green. But, and there's a cost reduction eventually, so it sounds like a good idea.
Sounds like we're all in favor. This is also yet another item for the 19th. And do we want to come back regular business?
I would say yes, because I, it's a little bit complicated, I think, to be on consent, maybe just so people have an explanation, a good explanation, I don't know, that, that's my perspective.
Eileen?
I agree.
All right.
I mean, it's, it's a interesting and I think very, I mean, it's, this is a positive for the city.
All right, so we recommend it comes back on regular business.
Would you like a presentation with that?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Something similar, or?
A presentation much like this one.
Okay, that sounds good.
All right, although I will give you a lead-in on it, so I could-
That sounds good, too.
I can get the ball rolling. All right, and with that, we are through our entire agenda and I am going to move to adjourn. Moved and seconded, and so we will adjourn, the next meeting is scheduled for July 11th here at 6:30 PM in council chambers. Thank you, thank you, audience at home. This concludes this meeting.